Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order this meeting of the City Commission of West Palm Beach. Today is January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is five oh one P. M. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence. Moment of silence, please. Madam President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the great public, for which it stands one nation, under God, for freedom, civil, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Let me remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and shall not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the day or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person desiring to address the Commission shall file a comment card, which will include their name, address, and agenda item upon which the person wants to speak. Those cards should be completed and delivered to the clerk prior to the numbered agenda item. All right, thank you very much. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have a request related to item eleven point two regarding a request to continue the item to the January twenty-second, twenty-two thousand twenty-four meeting. And the item relates to a Class A special use permit to construct a private dock located at seventy-four oh five South Flagler Drive. When that item comes up, we need a motion to continue it to the January twenty-second meeting.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations that I am proud to deliver. The first is to the Palm Beach Symphony. Marking its fiftieth anniversary, Palm Beach Symphony was founded on May ninth, nineteen seventy-four, celebrated its move from Palm Beach to the heart of the city of the West Palm Beach on January sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and expanded its mission of engaging, educating, and entertaining the greater community of the Palm Beaches. Music Director Gerald Schwartz is a nine-time Emmy Award winner who has brought international attention to the city's vibrant art scene with the recording of holiday music and nationally broadcast concerts. Palm Beach Symphony is expanding the orchestra music repertoire with five world premieres and brings internationally acclaimed artists to the Kravis Center in West Palm Beach. Palm Beach Symphony's educational programs impacted more than eight thousand six hundred students in the last school year, delivering two hundred seventy-nine instructional hours, ninety-seven coaching sessions with a hundred thirty-seven classes, and the donation of a hundred sixty-two instruments and three hundred ninety-six accessories. So I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as Palm Beach Symphony's fiftieth anniversary season celebration day. So here to accept this proclamation is Mr. James Forniac, Board Chair, Maestro Gerald Schwartz, Music Director, and Mr. David McClement, C. E. O. Gentlemen, if you'll join me down there, I will deliver the proclamation and...
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Board of Directors, our Board Chair, Mr. Boreenak, all of our musicians, our staff, and our internationally acclaimed maestro, thank you for giving us this opportunity for the proclamation. It's been an exciting journey during the past several years, especially under the baton of maestro, and we're very excited about what the future holds in store. Thank you very much.
Now I want to deliver a tribute to the law firm of Jones Foster. Jones Foster traces its roots in the West Palm Beach legal community back to nineteen twenty-four. Jones Foster attorneys have served as legal counselors and partners in progress to West Palm Beach residents and businesses for over a century from offices maintained within our city. Over the past century, the firm's attorneys have served in elected and appointed government positions, including as judges of the U. S. Federal District Court for the Southern District of Florida, the Fourth District Court of Appeal, and the Fifteenth Judicial Circuit as a member of the U. S. Congress and President of the Florida Senate, and as a U. S. Commissioner for the Southern District of Florida. The firm's attorneys served as Presidents of State and Local Bar Associations and Legal Industry Organizations and have held leadership roles in several West Palm Beach-based nonprofits and foundations. The firm's attorneys have contributed furthering higher education opportunities in promoting the economic development of West Palm Beach. So I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, who hereby pay tribute to Jones Foster in recognition of the firm's one-hundredth anniversary. Here to accept this tribute is Mr. Larry Alexander Chairman and Mr. Scott Hawken's Vice Chair. Gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, we are extremely grateful for this proclamation. On behalf of the more than eighty attorneys and staff members we have in our offices, we are very grateful for our opportunity to have been here for a hundred years, and we look forward to the next hundred years. Thank you very much.
All right. To public and City Commissioners, I do have the pleasure of presenting a couple of awards. We normally do this at our holiday party for the employees, but I thought it was important because if it's presented here in the City Commission, there's a tape, the public gets to hear about some of these accomplishments. So the first one I want to present is to the Employee of the Year, Melissa Corrales, who's a Management Analyst with Development Services. Let me give you a bit of background. So the city spent more than five years and over eight million dollars in implementing a new permitting software system that will impact more than a dozen departments and update over two hundred and fifty business processes. Melissa Corrales has risen to the challenge and has taken the lead in helping the department execute a smooth transition to this new software. She has worked with countless employees to further their understanding and use of the new E. P. L. system. The level of assistance she has provided to her colleagues as the city transitions from Community Plus to E. P. L. has been outstanding. She has taken command of the E. P. L. implementation and has worked with many colleagues to help them improve their knowledge of this new software. Her work will directly result in more efficient and responsive business processes. So please join me in congratulating Melissa Corrales as Employee of the Year. Melissa? The next presentation I want to make is to the Team of the Year, which is to our Parks and Recreation, the Waterfront Maintenance, and Park Skilled Trades Workers Team. Let me give you a little bit of background. Although producing large-city events is a multi-departmental effort, two specific teams are integral to their continued international acclaim: Waterfront Maintenance and Park Skilled Trades Workers. The city's Waterfront Maintenance Team supports the Community Events Division three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Production of more than one hundred and twenty-five annual city events attracting hundreds of thousands of residents and visitors would not be possible without their dedicated effort. Under the leadership of King Gary, Tomas Andres, and Tony White, the Waterfront Maintenance Team ensures the onsite logistics are seamlessly handled. Everything from setting up the weekly green market tents, climatus by night stage, preparation for one hundred thousand fourth on Flagler attendees, to managing the load-in and setup of eight hundred and fifty tons of sand for Sandy Tree and her activities in Sandy Land, the teams willingly accommodate the varied schedule of nights, weekends, and holidays, and are extremely flexible with accepting and completing assigned tasks. In charge of the setup for all city events, Tomas Andres is continuously proactive in anticipating and solving challenges. He is always forward-thinking, organized, and motivating his crew. One simple recent example of Tomas's proactive attitude was during the building of Sandy Tree. Tomas was onsite to assist the sand sculptors with their logistical needs. He noticed they were trying to lug a giant pail of water up the tree. He instantly asked him if he could get them another length of hose, which is far safer and easier than their methods. Tomas and his supervisor, King Gary, were instrumental in changing the sod in the great lawn to event turf. This was an outstanding recommendation, as it withstands heavy event usage and looks a hundred percent better than the previous choice. Tomas and his crew should be proud of the results of their meticulous maintenance of the grass. Residents and visitors love the lush lawn. Tony Santonius White and his crew keep our waterfront in tip-top landscape shape for city events and the additional hundred permitted events annually. Tony's crew also assists with bigger events. He follows up in a timely fashion, and he also has a never-say-no attitude. We would not have the best farmers market in the U. S. A. or be designated as a World Festival and Event City by the International Festival and Events Association without the support of these teams. Carl Anderson's Skilled Trades Team steps in for special projects, including installation of flamingo and holiday photo boards, and most recently, the creation of the H. M. S. Holly Jolly Pirate Ship. Carl and the team designed, built, and painted a giant pirate ship for kids to play in Paradise Island as part of Holiday in Paradise. Themed Treasure West Palm Beach, this year's event captivated all ages. Along with H. M. S. Holly Jolly, the crew is making and installing a pirate hook ring toss, treasure map bean bag toss, periscopes to view sandy, and mermaid and pirate mini photo ops. So I'm going to read off the names of the team members, and if I read your name, if you can come up and save your applause to the end, please. Team members Anthony Sandlin, Antonio Serrano Velez, Eric Carpenter, Eric Yellerbury, Giovanni Ramirez Torres, Jose Rincón, King Gary III, Levi Bellinger, Mark Robinson, Michael Lowly, Mitchell Fleming, Peter Bailey, Ramon Sellers, Santonius White, Willie Colbert Jr., Tomas Andres, and Benny Jones Jr. Please clap, ladies and gentlemen. Well, I think we've got a new annual tradition. So as long as I'm mayor, we will be doing the Employee of the Year, the Team of the Year, at City Hall. I think it's a great idea.
Yes.
We'll give them a few minutes to exit, and then we'll get on with the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, for doing it on the agenda.
It is also good for the public to hear about, you know, the work that our employees do is so varied. And, you know, it takes a true team to make all of the stuff work out, and so to acknowledge the hard work and efforts of so many of our employees publicly, I think is a very good thing. Okay, we will now move on with, I have the agenda. I have a couple of appointments. Item eight point one. City Commission approval was requested for the mayor's reappointment of Lisa Conley Harding to the Library Board for a term of three years to expire in January twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-seven. Ms. Conley Harding has served over the maximum allowable number of terms, three, and is required that the City Commission confirms her reappointment. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I move for appointment.
I think they have a recommended...
May I move approval of Ms. Conley Harding's reappointment is supported. She has been a committed member whose expertise with design has been particularly insightful for the board.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved, a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight point two. City Commission approval was requested for the mayor's reappointment of Patricia Sned to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for a term of two years to expire on November first, two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Sned has served over the maximum allowable number of terms, which is three, and is required that the City Commission confirm her reappointment. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I move approval of reappointment of Ms. Sned's reappointment is supported. Her leadership has been an integral part of keeping the parks protected and the bond funds spent appropriately.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now Commissioners, we'll turn to the Consent Calendar. Items nine point one through nine point six. Are there any questions, comments on consent? Items nine point one through nine point six. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the Consent Calendar. Items nine point one through nine point six.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Been moved, a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten point one. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five zero seven four dash twenty-three, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida at Chapter eighty-six, Traffic and Parking, by amending and restating Article Four, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, to amend Section eighty-six dash two ninety-two, Immobilization of Vehicles on Private Property, to add new provisions relating to notice, method of immobilization, and towing and removal procedure. Mr. Fana?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator, and happy new year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
So this particular ordinance just updates some outdated language within the Code of Ordinances in regards to towing, not towing, I'm sorry, immobilization on private property, better known as booting, although booting is just one way you can do immobilization. That's one of the things we're updating. But the three main things that this does is update the signage requirements, the language on that. Also, the requires removal of device within thirty minutes, provided that the payment has been made and within one hour of contact of the provider, from the person who's been immobilized. And then the fee schedule has been changed so that the maximum fee is consistent with what Palm Beach County has, which is currently seventy-five dollars per, to remove a device. So we want to be consistent throughout the county. A lot of folks are unaware of where the county, where the city lines are with the county, and so we don't have a bunch of different fees all over the county. We're just being consistent with them. And that is basically the gist of it. We will probably update some of the language on the signage for the second reading. I need to review that again, but it's just minor changes that we'll make, and I'll let you know what those are before the second reading. So with that, I recommend approval of first reading.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fana. Any questions or comments on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number five zero seven four dash two-three at first reading and schedule second reading.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero seven four dash two-three, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter eighty-six, Traffic and Parking, by amending and restating Article Four, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, to amend Section eighty-six dash two ninety-two, Immobilization of Vehicles on Private Property, to add new provisions relating to the notice, relating to notice, method of immobilization and towing and removal procedures, providing a conflict clause and a codification clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, we're moving into the quasi-judicial portion of the meeting. I will need you to make your disclosures, please. And we'll begin with drum roll. Commissioner Warren?
As to items eleven point one and eleven point three, I have not had any ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be part of the record.
Thank you. President Warren?
Mayor, as to items eleven point one, eleven point two, and eleven point three, I have not had ex parte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, and not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
As to items eleven point one and eleven point three, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Paduzzi.
As to items eleven point one and eleven point three, I have not had ex parte communication. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you. And I will make disclosures in the event I have to vote if there's a tie. As to this matter, as to items eleven point one, eleven point three, and eleven point three, I have not had any ex parte communications. I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items eleven point one and eleven point three please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We will now go to eleven point one. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five zero seven nine dash twenty-four regarding rezoning to change zoning designation of approximately two point six acres located at twenty-five hundred North Florida Mango Road from general commercial to commercial plan development, and Discussion of Resolution Number two dash twenty-four regarding the development regulations and conditions for the Tropicana self-storage commercial plan development and granting a waiver of the zoning and land development regulations. Who's speaking on this matter? Eleven point one. Who's speaking on this matter?
Mayor, we've just been informed that the applicant is not here. So staff, you all need to enter into the record what's the situation here.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the subject agenda item eleven point one, the applicant's not present to present their case. So staff would like to recommend a continuance to the January twenty-second City Commission meeting.
All right, I'll tell you what. Why don't we wait, I mean, we'll go to the other items. If they get here before the end of the meeting, then we'll take it up. If not, we'll entertain a motion to continue it. All right. Now, moving to eleven point two, we duty the motion to continue that item.
Mayor, I move continuance of Resolution Number three two four dash two-three to the City Commission meeting of January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, which starts at five P. M. in the West Palm Beach Commission Chambers at City Hall, located at four oh one Clamata Street.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, item eleven point three. Commissioner Paduzzi, I understand you have disclosure to make?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I am a partner in a firm that has an investment interest in a company that has a contract for services with the applicant. As such, I will be recusing myself from this vote, and that was in consultation with our City Attorney's Office.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Eleven point three. Resolution Number eight dash twenty-four, approving the replat of approximately one point zero four acres, forty-five thousand four hundred twenty-five square feet of real property generally located at three hundred Banyan Boulevard and three oh one Clamata Street, as is associated with the three hundred Banyan Boulevard Office Tower and one eleven Olive Avenue projects by Brand Atlantic slash three hundred Banyan LLC and three oh one Clamatis LLC.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Chris Kimmerly, urban design planner. This is for Resolution eight dash twenty-four. This is in regards to the office tower just around the block area at three hundred Banyan and one eleven Olive Avenue. The site plan was approved in January of two thousand and twenty-two. It's for almost ninety-eight thousand square feet of office and additional forty-one thousand square feet of mixed-use space on Clamata Street that's been renovated. This one point zero four acre property is looking to consolidate its development tracks into two separate tracks at this time. Construction for the project is nearing completion, and the... Construction for the project is nearing completion, and this is just an item to satisfy a condition of approval. This would be the final plat, as illustrated there, so you have the two separate development tracks, parcel A and B. And staff recommends approval of resolution eight dash twenty-four, as is in compliance with our sections ninety-four dash forty-four and ninety-four three forty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations, as well as chapter one seventy-seven of Florida statutes. Are there any questions?
Well, getting any questions for staff? Alright, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number eight dash twenty-four, creating the plat entitled three hundred Banyon Boulevard, three oh one Clumata Street. This motion is based upon the application submitted, staff report, factual testimony, and the findings that the request complies with all applicable provisions of chapter one seventy-seven Florida statutes, the comprehensive plan, and the standards in section ninety-four dash forty-four and ninety-four dash three forty-two of the city zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign, hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, do we have the applicant here for eleven point one, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Okay. Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year, thank you for the bump, sorry to be late. I probably need to be sworn in.
Didn't think you'd be as efficient.
I probably need to be sworn in.
Yes, please, Madam Clerk, can you swear in the witness, please?
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you again, John Schmidt, agent for the applicant, thanks for your consideration this afternoon. We're looking tonight at a possible rezoning and self-storage use for two point six acres located on Florida Mango Road just north of Belvedere, it was the old Tropical Bowling Lanes, if you remember that building. It is, current has a land use of C and a zoning of CG. We'd also like to change it to a commercial plan development, a rezone on the property. Again, a rezoning from the CG to CPD that will require a waiver request for the lot size, required five by code, and we're providing two point six acres. The Tropical Lanes was closed in two thousand and one, they originally tried to rehabilitate the building, but due to the FEMA standards, it was gonna have to come up eighteen inches, so we decided instead to redesign the site and bring it up to code. It was nearly one hundred percent pervious, minimal landscaping and, you know, unsafe kind of driveways that conflicted with other ones across the street. This is the proposed plan, a hundred and eight thousand square foot self-storage, about a seventeen million dollar value. It's in two phases. Landscaping is now of twenty percent, provides buffers to all the neighbors, a bunch of additional green space, meets fire code, and all the code requirements. Parking was, just came in front of you for a parking requirement change, so now we're just overparked by one, but they really don't need much parking, so. This is the proposed elevations for the property, which I think is nice architecture, certainly an upgrade for the neighborhood and surrounding. We do have the waiver request that I mentioned, the five acres required and only two point six provided. We do meet the minimum standards of the code and the sections, A through H. We receive unanimous approval from the planning board and ask that you support this tonight. We did go meet with the neighborhoods and around us, and everybody was very happy with the upgrade that was coming. That's all I have for you tonight, and happy answer, any questions?
Very good, any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Questions for the applicant, okay, Mr. Schmidt, stand by. Staff, what say ye?
Good evening again. For the record, Kevin DeFrank, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department. For the two point four acre waiver reduction request, staff does not object to this waiver request, and staff finds the request complies with the rezoning standards and the site design qualitative development standards found in the city's zoning and land development regulations. And on November twenty-first of last year, the planning board voted for a recommendation of approval with the condition of the subject rezoning and waiver request, and therefore staff is recommending an approval of ordinance number five zero seven nine dash twenty-four and resolution number dash two, two dash twenty-four. And as you can see on the screen, Commissioners, you're only voting on ordinance number five zero seven nine dash twenty-four. And thank you, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, any questions for staff, any comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five zero seven nine dash twenty-four, a rezoning to change the zoning designation of approximately two point six acres located at twenty-five hundred North Florida Mango Road from general commercial to commercial plan development. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero seven nine dash two-four, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the city of West Palm Beach, Florida, by rezoning two parcels located at twenty-five hundred North Mango Road, approximately two point six acres from general commercial GC to commercial plan development, CPD, to create the Tropicana self-storage commercial plan development, providing for the establishment of development regulations by separate resolution, declaring this rezoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign, hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, that is the last item on the agenda, we're now ready for comments from the folks, we have cards. Thank you. We have two cards, Susan Gladman and Nona McKinney. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Susan and Nona.
My name is Susan Gladman, and I'm here as a representative of the Palm Beach Section of National Council of Jewish Women, which is a grassroots organization of volunteers that strive for social justice by improving the quality of life for women, children, and families, and by safeguarding individual rights and freedoms. January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I'd like to provide some information on the issue of labor and sex trafficking of minors and the rising occurrence of sex extortion. Traffickers lure or trick teens and pre-teens in schools, homeless shelters, parks, malls, and many other places, including on the internet, through social media, and through various apps, especially gaming apps. They seek out vulnerable kids by offering them friendship, food, shelter, and gifts. They build trust by isolating the minor from the family and friends, and when the minor is totally dependent upon the predator, they will force, trick, or coerce them to provide sexual or labor services. A new twist to the scenario is sex extortion, which is a form of internet blackmail. The predator initiates a conversation via direct message or on an app posing as a member of the same or opposite sex. As the conversation develops, the predator sends a sexually explicit photo and asks for one in return. The perpetrator will then will demand payment, an amount of money that a minor victim could not reach. Threats by the perpetrator then will include posting and revealing the photo on the internet, sending it to the parents or friends. They may also threaten to harm family members, friends, or relatives by using the information they've obtained from the victim's electronic devices. Victims become terrified, ashamed, and often unable to handle the stress of the situation, and often suicide occurs. We are reaching out to elected officials, residents, and persons working with or in contact with minors, middle and high school-aged females, and males to educate them about the signs that a minor may be a victim of trafficking or sex extortion, and hopefully that person will become a trusted adult, and that minor could turn to him or her to stop them from making irreversible decisions. We hope from this appearance word will reach your park and recreation staff, coaches, librarians, and educators. I thank you for this time to speak today, we offer free presentations to anyone who would need it, and we will tailor them to their needs, and I have brochures on the sex extortion, and on the back is all our contact information, thank you.
Thank you very much, if you leave those with the clerk, we will...
Where can I leave the brochures?
Leave them with the clerk, and we will get them, maybe Ms. Johnson, we can have them delivered to the library, maybe even some of our community centers that work with pre-teens. Okay, we will get those distributed, thank you. Nona McKinney, please.
Thank you Mayor and Commissioners for this opportunity. My name is Nona McKinney, I'm a resident of Palm Beach County, I'm a mother of nine, biological children, and twelve. I live at twenty-one hundred North Australian Avenue. At one thirty in the morning on New Year's Day, a bullet came through my bedroom window while my grandchildren were spending the week with me, because my daughter was in the hospital. The bullet missed us, went through the window into my closet, my son came and got the bullet out. I am a recent graduate, I am a homeless survivor, living at twenty-one hundred has been a blessing, but also I am afraid for my life. I plead with the City Commissioner and Mayor if you could deem that neighborhood a nuisance. I don't know if it's possible, the security is not sufficient, we are next door to Roosevelt, we have had twenty-five shootings in ten years and five homicides. The West Palm Beach Police Department, they are wonderful, but they are not able to come in and protect us. The neighborhood is predominantly children of all different races. I plead with the city, I plead with you, before there's another homicide, we had one on January the second. A young man was in a guest parking lot, broad daylight on a weekday, he was murdered, execution-style shot. It is a dangerous neighborhood, if I could move today, I would have moved tomorrow. But I'm not able to move at this time, but there are children in that neighborhood. I plead with the city, I plead with you to do something about that neighborhood, please, thank you for the opportunity. And I have my phone number and my contact information, I'm also, I just got my high school diploma, good things do come out of that neighborhood. Since I've been there, I've been able to build my credit, I went back and got my diploma. I'm also featured in an educational commercial with my grandchildren, and, you know, it's just, it's not a safe neighborhood. And not just for myself, but children that are going to Roosevelt. You know, we have a lot of walkers in that neighborhood, what do they do when gun violence breaks out? Where do they run if it's happening in the parking lot on a weekday, broad daylight? I beg of you, Mayor, to please, I know you've been there before, when Bernard Jones was killed, we had a triple shooting. It's not getting better. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, is that property privately owned?
It is.
Alright, Madam City Attorney, if I could sit down with you, maybe we could work on some kind of correspondence to, I don't know if there are any, let's strategize. Thank you again for bringing that to our attention. Maybe get the police chief in that meeting, and let's get stat data on calls of service, maybe that'll help us. Okay, thank you, last card, Michael Cleveland.
Good evening Mayor, Commissioners, Michael Cleveland, West Palm. I'm sad, Mayor, listening to the previous speaker. Our country's just plagued with violence of all kinds, and gun violence takes top of the list. I don't know what you can do about it, but I'm sure you're trying to do something. I want to speak briefly about the Bright Line making accusations that most of the tragic killings that they are encountering is because of people committing suicide. A lot of that may be true, but I think it's something else that might be causing those deaths. And I'm not sure what it is, but they're not all from suicide. Actually, I think the death on the bridge was suicide, but that's just my opinion. I want to also speak about Black History Month coming up next month, February. I'm not sure if the city has gotten together with any of the local schools in our city to have some of the students perhaps come in and do a little reading or performance or whatever. That has never happened in these chambers, but I would ask that you consider it, you do have some time. Maybe you go one or two schools, some maybe get together, but I'm sure the general public, particularly in the black community, would like to see something of that nature. Glad everybody made it safe through the holidays, enjoy your evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay Commissioners, we will now turn to comments from the dais, and we will start with you, President Warren.
Thank you Mayor, I am happy that we are approaching the South Florida Fair, the grand opening and kickoff. And the fair runs from January twelfth through twenty-eighth, and I'm looking forward to lively schedule and a lot of fun at the fair. And on January fifteenth, we celebrate Martin Luther King Junior Day, and this is celebrated the third Monday in January of each year. And the holiday encourages all Americans to reflect on principles of racial equality and that we come together in a way that is unified, and that we encourage people to volunteer and to do different things to improve the community. The day is one that I remember as was one of the very first things that I voted to support when I became a legal voting citizen. So I'm very happy that we've seen so many, so many advances as it relates to supporting social norms and social reform. I encourage everyone to attend the Martin Luther King Breakfast that is held by the Martin Luther King Host Committee on January fifteenth at the Convention Center. It is the forty-third annual scholarship breakfast, taking place at eight AM at six fifty Okeechobee Boulevard. And on January eighteenth at Palm Beach State College, there will also be a celebration of Martin Luther King Junior, and that celebration will be Thursday, January eighteenth, where the keynote speaker will be Mr. Leonard Marshall. I'd also like to encourage people to come out on February the third to support the Project Twelve Calendar, which is celebrating its tenth edition. And I am happy to acknowledge Mr. Frank Hayden being acknowledged in that calendar for this year. He's kicking it off in January, this is the tenth year of the Project Twelve Calendar that celebrates outstanding achievements and men, extraordinary actions of black men in the community that are fathers and teachers and doing amazing things. This event will take place at Boca West Country Club at eleven PM, excuse me, eleven AM on February the third. On, also on February the third, Palm Beach County black elected officials are hosting their annual scholarship luncheon, and that event will also be taking place at eleven AM. And I'm looking forward to people coming out to celebrate the scholarship luncheon with us. The proceeds will benefit children in West Palm Beach, eleven AM Saturday, February third, at the Marriott at one zero zero one Okeechobee Boulevard in West Palm Beach. The tickets are seventy-five dollars, and the proceeds will benefit children in Palm Beach, school-aged children entering college in Palm Beach County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren.
Thank you Mayor, and this wasn't part of my comments, but the, that neighborhood that the resident mentioned, that's the same neighborhood that, a couple months ago, that the residents were coming to talk about, and I did check with the Palm Beach County Housing Authority and the West Palm Beach Housing Authority, they aren't providing any of their vouchers. So at least we know that there isn't a local agency supporting that owner, but it is a private owner, and would love your help, because I know the chief knows it very well, and has, there's been a couple times where they've been wanting witnesses and haven't gotten witnesses, unfortunately for some of the bigger crimes, but it's not a resident that we want operating as a landlord in our city, that's for sure. And I'll leave it at that. We did have a wonderful event this past Friday at the MLK Memorial, hosted by the MLK Memorial Host Committee. Thank you to our city, that memorial was sparkling and beautiful, so it was a great night, even though it rained, it was a great celebration, and I was very proud of how that memorial looked and that we get to celebrate Martin Luther King Junior's memory in such a beautiful, beautiful manner on our waterfront. There are two cleanups in dedication of Martin Luther King Junior on the fifteenth, at least in my district. One at Blum Park, which is in Pleasant City, starting at eight AM. And then another, I've joined with Surface Seventy-One who's done multiple park cleanups throughout our area, and that will be at Curry Park. And then another, I've joined with Surface Seventy-One, who's done, um, multiple park cleanups throughout our area, and that will be at Curry Park, um, at, starting at ten and ending at one, so if you are an early bird, please go to Blum, and if you want to do something in the middle of the day, please go to Curry at ten. Um, and our next police chief meeting is this Saturday at eight, six-thirty at Gaines Park, please come and attend, um, and avoid any concerns that you have. Oh, another MLK, um, um, event that's going on, um, on Saturday, the thirteenth, at six-thirty to seven-thirty, in honor of Martin Luther King Junior Day, uh, Trinity United Methodist Church is, is hosting a candlelight service, and that church is located at fourteen oh one Ninth Street in our beautiful city. And I think that that is it for my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, it's good to be with you all again, so, start off with that, I hope you all had a nice holiday break. Um, earlier today, I had the opportunity to go to the TPA, had a workshop on transportation funding options. We have a lot of transportation needs in our county, but we have not a lot of dedicated funding to pay for those, um, transportation options in the future. Our neighbors to the south, Miami Dade and Broward, both have a penny tax, um, a cert tax, that helps them to pay for their transportation, and over the last years, um, they have been able to add train lines, uh, buses that come every five minutes, um, making it just very efficient and convenient for people to actually take public transportation. So, we have a penny tax in our ci- in our county that is set to expire, and if it does, um, I think that this is an absolute great opportunity for us to look to the future, and being innovative of possibly putting another penny tax initiative on the ballot, um, going forward in, for transportation specifically. This could add things like Tri-Rail Service that goes to Jupiter, um, Light Rail Service that goes from downtown West Palm Beach to Wellington. Um, it could add something for all of our neighborhoods, north, south, east, west, so that not every option is for every person, not everybody is gonna get out of their car, but the more people that have options other than driving, helps the people that are driving to have less trans- less, you know, traffic in the morning, less congestion. And so, I'm really excited about this opportunity, that we're gonna start talking about it a li- little bit more, I'm sure you'll start hearing about it. Um, it's something that's being proposed possibly for the twenty twenty-four ballot. Um, it would have to be taken up by the county, so it's not something that we can do something about other than sort of lobby and advocate and, and let people know about the benefits for them and their neighborhoods. But I wanted to just bring that to your attention. Um, also, just before the holidays, I was actually elected to the Executive Board of the TPA, so I'm really excited about getting more involved with their projects. Also, just before the holidays, I was able to attend the Mayor's Jumpstart Academy graduation, and I don't want to take anything away from your remarks, Mayor, but I really enjoyed it. It was fantastic to meet some of these entrepreneurs, they were from, mostly from underserved communities, and they had a chance to talk about, um, their businesses at the graduation, and I was just absolutely blown away. There was a couple of them I, I had known before, um, but most of them I hadn't, and this really is a life-changing opportunity for them, so Mayor, thank you for that, um, initiative, and looking forward to the next one. I also just wanted to mention, I just got an email about the Roosevelt Full Service Center, will have a groundbreaking, um, on January eighteenth at ten AM, that is at sixteen oh one North Tamron Avenue. I think we all know a little bit about that project, it's been going on probably for ten-plus years, I'm really excited to see this groundbreaking. I don't know if anyone is still here who came earlier to talk to us about the Holocaust Museum, I fully support that idea too. Um, but I think, you know, when I look at, um, some of the groups that have been involved in a black history museum, probably for upwards of ten years, I've been to their homes where they have artifacts that they're collecting, waiting for the day that they can have a museum of some kind, and so I am very supportive of all these things. Um, I think that there's a process in place, and I, again, I'm not sure what the ask is of, um, of us tonight, um, with the, the people that spoke earlier, and I fully support their vision, but I think there's also a process in place that, um, that the city is not the creator of museums. We can be supporters of ideas when they come to us, but I, I just would love to hear more if any of them are listening to us tonight, I would love to understand better if they wanted to call or email some of their additional plans to us. Um, and this week will be the first Downtown Neighborhood Association meeting of the year, it will be held on January eleventh at six o'clock at the Community Foundation at seven hundred South Dixie Highway, so look forward to seeing any downtown neighbors there, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baduzi.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have the pleasure of serving with Commissioner Fox on the Transportation Planning Agency, and congratulations on your, um, uh, election to the Executive Board. Um, I'm sure that, that you will do a great job there as you do here. Um, with regard to the Holocaust Museum, I agree with Commissioner Fox's comments, I said it before, um, that while I would support the concept, um, I really think this is something that needs to be led by the community, um, a community effort, and I'll be happy to get behind it. The resident that came up in front of us here this evening and spoke about her concerns about violence in her neighborhood. Um, prior to being, be running for elective office here in, in West Palm, I was Chair of the City's Nuisance Abatement Board. And it may be something if we have a, an owner, a property owner, uh, who is complicit, um, or is not taking action or appropriate steps to, um, prevent crime on their property, it might be something that the Nuisance Abatement Board, uh, could, could take a look at. And finally, um, mark your calendars, January twenty-eighth is the annual IBIS Charities Food Drive from one PM to four PM. And hopefully, we will see everyone there, I know that my colleagues are usually there, helping to, uh, collect and, uh, the food, and, and there's usually, as I remember, tens of thousands of pounds of food every year that are donated. Um, so it's, it's certainly a worthy cause and a, and a great event. And just a quick shout-out to Commissioner Lambert, I hope you're feeling better, thank you.
Thank you, uh, just a few, uh, comments, uh, first of all, welcome back, everybody, I hope you had a good, uh, holiday, uh, uh, season, and looking forward to a healthy, happy, prosperous New Year. Uh, there will be a ribbon-cutting and grand opening of the EVA W Mac Community Hub on this Thursday, January eleventh at ten AM. Uh, this building was named in honor of the first African-American female mayor of West Palm Beach and the founder of a chapter of the Sickle Cell Foundation. Uh, the community center is now the new home of services traditionally offered through our vicar's house on Palm Beach Lakes. Uh, the foundation and other local nonprofit organizations, and it features two multi-space rooms, a computer lab, a co-working space, storage and donation rooms, restrooms equipped with showers, and various infrastructure improvements, so I encourage everyone to attend. That's Thursday, January eleventh at ten AM, uh, ribbon-cutting, grand opening of the EVA W Mac Community Hub. I did want to, uh, bring to the attention, um, um, the, the, the plans for the waterfront visioning sessions. I had stated several months ago, when we were discussing the Marina, uh, my, uh, plans to initiate a comprehensive and considerate and significant, uh, visioning and public engagement, uh, process, uh, where we would get the, uh, hear from all of our citizens throughout the city, uh, their views on activating our waterfront from bridge to bridge. Uh, so to ensure a thorough and inclusive approach, uh, the city recruited the expertise of an outside consultant. Uh, their role is vital in crafting an extensive public engagement strategy to gather the public's input, contributing significantly to, con- contributing significantly to shaping the future of our waterfront. Uh, now, I want to emphasize my unwavering commitment to transparency, uh, throughout this process. Uh, it is imperative that every resident knows their voice matters. Uh, we are providing abundant opportunities for meaningful input from all corners of our city, ensuring that every West Palm Beach resident has a chance to participate in these public engagement sessions. Uh, as additional opportunities for direct public engagement arise, we will ensure that every resident has a chance to contribute, uh, to that process. Your participat- your participations are just welcome, it's vital to create crafting a waterfront that reflects the aspirations of our entire community. Uh, so hopefully through this process, we can ensure that this, uh, all-community input, transparency, and inclusivity is honored and appreciated and recognized. Uh, there's already been a reference to the Martin Luther Ki- King Junior Scholarship Breakfast on January fifteenth. On, uh, Sunday, January fourteenth, you're invited to the grand finality of Twelfth Annual Supercar Week on our great West Palm Beach waterfront, Great Lawn. Uh, brace yourself for a spectacular celebration of speed and luxury that promises an unforgettable experience. And on next Thursday, the eighteenth, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, will be hosting my, uh, state-of-the-city breakfast. Uh, I'm told they're expecting a record number of attendance, and this will be my fifth address. Um, according to their website, discount tickets are available until five PM on this Thursday, and that is, that, uh, breakfast, I believe, begins at seven-thirty. So that's all my remarks, God bless each and every one of you, God bless your families, and God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. Good night, everyone, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.